Hold on.
Like to call to order the December fifteenth, two thousand and twenty Brooklyn City School District Board of Education Regular Meeting. Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Here.
Mr. Neal.
Here.
Mr. Oper.
Here.
Mr. Slattery.
He is not present this evening.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Here. Can we all stand for the pledge, please?
Flag is where?
I pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Guys. Okay, and I want to, before we go on to the treasures report, we'd like to rest Rocky Neal a happy birthday. And then now we're going to, happy birthday, Rock. We are going to the treasurer's report. Mrs. A.
Yes, thank you. I have a few things for you, and then I will introduce Mr. Seed for you. One of the things I wanted to say, the eligible families that met the requirements for the monies provided by the Cuyahoga County Board of Health have been notified, and they will pick up their family gift cards this week. There were twenty eligible families, and they will receive three hundred and ninety-seven dollars and fifty cents each for a Giant Eagle gift card. He settled, so that's some good news right before the holidays. The settlement agreement with Dr. Kleikoff has been finalized. Audit is wrapping up the fiscal year twenty audit. After talking with them, the auditors are okay with the fiscal year twenty journal entries adjustments that were not made during fiscal year twenty. So I'll be making those later on this week. And now I would like to introduce Mr. David Seed from Brinza McIntyre and Seed LLP. He'll be going over the potential CRA agreement with the city of Brooklyn.
Hi, I hope everyone's doing well, and I just want to say hello from this distant location. I appreciate the opportunity again to provide assistance to the school board. I think the treasurer advised you at an earlier meeting of a potential opportunity for the development of a nursing home next to the assisted living facility. The city approached the school board probably in October, I believe, about providing tax incentives to the developer. And they, we looked at a couple of options, including tax increment financing and an abatement. If you recall, last year at this time, the school board agreed with Medical Mutual and the developer of Cleveland American, the former American Greens facility, for a tax abatement. And what we're going to be discussing tonight is a similar tax abatement, but with a twist. So what I've provided, I think Colleen sent the, some summaries out to you today, is, and I'm just going to go through some of the law, in Ohio, a CRA, what's called a community reinvestment area, can be for up to fifteen years or a hundred percent. But school board approval is required if the abatement exceeds fifty percent. Now, what the city is con, was contemplating was a ten-year abatement and a, not a hundred percent abatement, but a lower percentage. And through discussion with the city, we came up to maximize competing interests. We've come up with a concept where we're going to provide the developer of this nursing home a one-hundred percent abatement over ten years, but the developer is going to make compensation payments to both the school board, Brooklyn, and Polaris in the amount that the school, both school boards would receive in the absence of the abatement. So the school boards would be held harmless. Now, first and foremost, you're going to continue to receive revenue on the land that exists at the end of Idol. And that's about twenty thousand dollars a year. That can change due to the changes in the value of the land. The spreadsheet I provided you, there's three of them actually. What we do not know over time is what the value of the nursing home will be. We know, we have an idea of what it could cost, but cost does not equal value. And what the city and our office put together was an analysis of different valuations. If the building had a value of eight million, ten million, or twelve million dollars of value, for example, at eight million, the, the school board may receive a hundred and fifty-two thousand, one hundred eighty-seven dollars a year. At ten million, you would receive a hundred and ninety thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars a year, and at twelve million, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, two hundred eighty dollars a year. Now, in the spreadsheet, that amount slightly increases over time due to an inflationary increase. And you'll see in the upper right corner, there's a total that the school board may receive over the ten years. Now, that amount can change. Obviously, I've mentioned it can change due to different valuations. It could also change due to different mileage rates. If you, if you were to pass a tax levy over the ten, next ten years. So what you, you know, you'd be put in the same position that you would be if the property had no tax abatement. Okay, now, you'll see in the upper right corner of the spreadsheet why this is a, of interest. And if you go to the first one, just look at the eight million dollar. What, what is the value to the company? The company, you'll see in each of the three spreadsheet sheets, the value of the CRA to the company increases at an eight million dollar value, a ten million, and a twelve million dollar value. Because as the value goes up, the amount of taxes they are not paying increases. The company, the benefit to the company is that, other than paying the two school boards, they're not paying the other taxing entities. They're not paying the city taxes, the county property taxes, library property taxes, port authority taxes, Metro Park taxes. There's, the company, the developer, saving about forty percent. The value to the school board is, changes likewise in each of the three spreadsheets. What's constant in each of the three spreadsheets is the value to the city of Brooklyn. The city of Brooklyn estimates that over the ten years, it'll receive one million, two hundred thirty-three thousand, one hundred seventy-eight dollars. Now, the city, when, when the city approached Ted and Colleen, their, their initial concern was that they wanted to keep all of the payroll taxes. They didn't want to share them with the school board because their thought, as you can see from this analysis, was that the school board was the largest beneficiary. So by creating a model where we use a hundred percent abatement and the taxpayer pays the school boards, the school boards receive the full revenue that they would receive. The city keeps all of its payroll taxes, and the developer can maximize the abatement. Now, let's go through, if there's any downsides to this. The only downside to this is, instead of the school board being first in line for payment of property taxes, because taxes are a first lien in the event of a foreclosure on the property, we simply have a contract with the owner of the property. Now, that risk is limited because the nature of this property being a nursing home, it's not, as opposed to a manufacturing property or an office property. Given the demand for nursing homes in our markets over the next ten years, and the fact that with, the owner, developer of this property is Progressive Quality Care. They own about a dozen, I wouldn't say a dozen, probably eight or nine nursing homes in northeast Ohio. And they've actually completed one in Warrensville Heights and Lynn Hur. They're building their offices in Lynn Hur, and they may be building a home in Lynn Hur, too. So it's not likely that the, the home is going to relocate to, you know, Des Moines, Iowa in the middle of the night, like a business closing up. So it's likely over the ten years that the company will remain in business. And finally, in the event that the company did not make the compensation payments to the school board, the city can terminate the tax abatement. And obviously, we would have contract rights to enforce in a court of law. But I do not expect, you know, we do not expect that to come to fruition. It's a win-win opportunity in this situation for the city, both school boards and the owner. Does anyone have any questions?
Eric, I have a question. That is, should Progressive Quality Care, I assume that they are a for-profit corporation?
Correct.
Or else they, should they down the road, sell the property to a not-for-profit, nonprofit organization that, that runs nursing homes? Would this affect the tax abatement at all?
If they sell the, sell it to a for-profit, or they sell it, if they sell the property, the abatement will continue. If they were to sell the property to a nonprofit entity, it's, there is a potential that the property could be exempt from taxes. But that is, that opportunity exists regardless of, are entered into this agreement or not.
Okay. Good, good to know. Thank you, Eric.
Anyone else have any other questions for David?
Just to be clear, this is more of a, my understanding, this is more of a, like a long-term rehab nursing home type facility. It's not a nursing home per se, like their neighbors next door to them. It's more of a long-term rehab, if you're convalescing there rather than in a hospital. So it is a nursing home, but it's got that little, it's a little different than your, what we perceive to be a normal nursing home.
That's what I believe. I don't exactly know the, the business model.
Right, they're not, they're not affiliated with Meridian who runs the nursing home that's next door. It's, it's a different enterprise, but it's, it's more of a long-term rehab, kind of like the one that's on Old Oak Boulevard by Southwest General.
That's what I believe. I mean, they, they, a lot of them tend to have a rehab component, because rehab, you can make money on nursing facilities. The challenge is Medicaid and Medicare. You, you hope to break even, and you may lose money. And for rehab and private pay and long-term, or sort of a step down from hospital care, you can make more money.
Right.
Looking at their website, it looks like they have about thirteen facilities.
Right.
It's the same place, yeah, so.
They're a local comp, they're locally owned. The investors are local. They've been around a long time. But the nature of the business, you know, I'm, it's, I'm not worried that they're going to, you know, it's not, that their business is not going to be sold to, you know, and they're going to relocate to China, and it's going to be an empty building.
Right.
And then, you know, in that, you know, and just for your information, if that were to occur, the city would just terminate the abatement. Someone else would go into a property. This, you know, nursing, nursing, and being a new nursing home, it's not likely it's going to become obsolete within ten years. It's going to become, it's going to be built to the current specifications and preferences of, of people that seek out nursing care.
David, when would be the first year we would start seeing some of this money coming in?
Okay, well, you know, if they build it, they start construction in, in, in twenty-one, and they complete it in twenty-two, it likely would go first on the tax duplicate in twenty-three. And I'm talking about being fully taxable, so.
Right.
See, the full amount of revenue may not be until calendar year twenty-twenty-four. However, you will start to see some revenue in twenty-twenty-two and twenty-twenty-three due to partial construction.
Okay.
And not to get too far in the weeds, you receive revenue while it's partially being constructed through the normal tax collection process, because the developer, the owner, is not going to want the abatement to start until they're, they've completed the building when it's, has its highest value.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you, David. That was, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mrs. A, do you have anything to add to that?
I have nothing further.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. A, did you need, did you have anything to add to that, or can I go on to the superintendent's report?
You could go on. Thank you.
Okay, now.
Thanks, David.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And now on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Kalaris.
Good evening. Mrs. Barcheck, Board of Education. I'm going to start this evening with Mr. Hare, Mr. Larson, and Mrs. Kalish in terms of talking about the program of study. I know this is, in talking to them, this is new for the Board of Education, but I think this is an important endeavor, because I think the program, the program of study is, is how our high school runs their, their course offerings and their program. And I, I think it's an important piece to, to showcase to the board and to the community some of the changes that we're going forward. So this will be an annual thing for us in December, where we will review the, the, the program of study, any changes of curriculum offerings. I think I sent you the document a couple of weeks ago for you to look at. It's a big document, obviously. Mr. Hare and Mr. Larson are going to kind of highlight some of the, the key changes. I'll start with them, and then afterwards, I have some short comments before, you know, since this is our last meeting of the year. So I'll, I'll hand it off to Mr. Hare, Mr. Larson, and Mrs. Kalish, and thank them for being here this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Kalaris. Mr. Black, can you share presentation for me, so I can present? I'm going to go ahead. While Mr. Black does that, I just want to thank Mrs. Barcheck and the Board of Education for having us here this evening with the opportunity to share program of study for the upcoming year. Also, I think it's important to thank Dr. Kalaris, Mrs. Kalish, and also Mrs. Jones for their leadership as we've worked through this document. It's, let me get this presented. All right. Mr. Black, I'm good?
You're good. We can see it. Yep.
All right, excellent. So when we, we look at our program of study, we're really looking at the courses that the high schools are going to offer for the upcoming school year, as well as some of the different requirements, updates to graduation, and some of the different policies and procedures that we follow here at the high school. Our big focus, when we went through this process, was we wanted to build depth in our upper-level course offerings for college credit plus and AP offerings. So when we looked at what we had previously offered in previous years, we really felt that there was an opportunity to build depth for our students in order to allow them a better opportunity and to be more prepared when they leave us and graduate here from Brooklyn High School. Giving students the opportunity to access those upper-level courses really not only improves their exposure, but also gives them a leg up on some, on, when they're going to different university and college programs. We also want to improve our support for our students who needed remediation, who were learning and needed some more catching up in some cases, or just more practice on different activities and different content. We wanted to review the, and design course offerings to align with course sequencing. This was to give a better vision for our families, and we wanted to provide academic growth opportunities based on our data-driven decisions for students. As we've gone through and created this document, what we really looked at, too, as well, is, is our process. So what does the process look like here at Brooklyn? Not only for the students, but also for us as administrators, and making sure that we're meeting the needs of our students. So we went through and really want to give a clear understanding and picture for our students and our families, and also our teachers, as to what it looks like as you travel through your path here at Brooklyn High School. We met with teams of teachers. Would be remiss without really highlighting that, and, and the fact that, that we're really lucky. We have a group of teachers that are willing to spend time having constructive conversations about what we teach and why we teach it. We have a team of teachers that support our students and are, really look out for the best interest of our families here in Brooklyn. In doing this and in traveling this process with our, with our teachers, we really wanted to look to add prerequisite levels to our courses. This is to allow, as students progress through the courses, to allow teachers to really dig deeper into the content so that our students could have a greater understanding of what they're learning. And then we also want to increase the level of rigor in our course offerings while supporting emerging students. So when students come to any school, they're all are working at different levels. So what we want to do is provide offerings to help support any level of student. Whether it's, we're providing extensions, whether we're providing interventions, or whether we're just providing more depth to a student who has a higher level of interest in specific content area or subject.
Great. Mr. Eric, could you change it to slide number four real quick?
Yeah.
Um. Excellent. So we talked about wanting to build depth within our upper-level course offerings, specifically looking at what we can offer to our juniors and seniors moving forward to provide more opportunities for them here on campus, to kind of expand the CCP program or any kind of college preparatory course, without taking away some of the things that are existing in the structure now. Current course offerings for the two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one school year, we're offering five CCP courses, in-person courses on Brooklyn's campus, and then five AP classes as well. What we would like to do moving forward is to increase those numbers, have the ability to at least have those approved moving forward. And that would be for our nine CCP classes in person or on Brooklyn's campus, and nine AP classes as well. What we're trying to do again is, is try to increase the amount of credits that our students can graduate from high school, so that if they're transitioning into the college level, either a two- or four-year degree, that they're as prepared as we could possibly make them moving forward, and offer some of those courses that may be lacking at the moment, to be able to kind of encourage them to stay on campus. The next slide. Mr. Excellent. So building courses to support our students. We wanted to adjust the sequencing for the classes to meet the needs of our learners. What we mean by this is we're going to be adding a life science course in the ninth grade to be able to offer some type of, kind of build up to biology, so that they're not taking biology right now as, as freshmen. We feel like the course is a little bit challenging for some of our students in order to get the full depth of knowledge out of it. So building a, kind of a, it's not a remediation course, but a preparation course for that, that next level. And then also doing an applied algebra course for those students who need a little bit of additional instruction in mathematics before they go on to Algebra One and have to be tested on that, since that's going to be one of the tests that the state of Ohio will be looking at for graduation. Zero block for our students. This is something that Mr. Hare presented to us back in the summertime, and it's really nice and encouraging to see our counselors and, and our teachers really round, rally around this notion. What we're thinking for the students is providing them a time throughout the school day to receive sub-level of intervention from the teachers, maybe courses that they're struggling in. It would be more than just a study hall. It would be an opportunity for also the students to reinforce their future planning using the vehicle of Naviance that we currently have, and just making a little, practicing that policy, or at least that, that platform with a little bit more fidelity for our students. And then time for us to develop some of the social-emotional pieces that we've been discussing as, as a building, and really making sure that the students are being met as a whole person, as opposed to just the academic piece, and really kind of fleshing that out a little bit more. It's already existing, but making sure that we go ahead and develop that even further.
If I could add just a piece of background on the applied algebra conversation. We talked with many districts that neighbor us that also have implemented an applied algebra course as assistance for students who are not quite ready for the full Algebra One class. We're also working in the primary case seven curriculum as well with math to realign and help prepare kids as they move through those courses so that we can hopefully get them better prepared at the lower level, so that when they get to the high school, they're prepared to tackle that content.
As we go through this, we're going to, going to really highlight some of the key pieces that we had a lot of good conversations with teachers and the different stakeholders to make sure that we're supporting our students. Mr. Larson just spoke of the zero block and some of our courses that we wanted to look at to help support our emerging learners. The, the next piece that we really want to look at is revamping our college and career readiness courses. So currently, we have our eighth-grade leadership class, and then we're looking at Prepared for Success, one and two. So offering a broader range, or offering a course that presents to a broader range of students, really looking at some of their different skills that they'll use to be successful in a college setting or in a workforce setting, whatever that decision is made by that family and those students as to the track and, and decisions that they want to make once they graduate from Brooklyn High School. I think really, when we look at this, we want to look at what is the best product that we can present to our community and to other communities when a student leaves Brooklyn High School and graduates from here. As they move into the Preparing for Success three, so that one and two would be their ninth and tenth grade year. As they move to Preparing for Success three, we're really looking at, starting to narrow the focus for students that really want to go into our, a college track, whether that be a community college, a four-year program, but really providing them with the skills that they're going to need to be successful. And then, in their fourth year, is when we'll really focus solely on that, on that college piece. Our students do, are provided an opportunity to explore different career and career opportunities in their, our senior English class. So that is not going by the wayside, but this is going to be really tailored to supporting those students, making sure that they are ready and prepared to be successful when they enter a college or university.
Mr. Hare, just real quick, so the, the, that Level Four class.
Yep.
Would also apply to students who are entering some of these high-level trade schools that they need financial aid, things like that. So it's not just a traditional Cleveland State or Baldwin Wall. So it could be, it could be focused on some of those high-level post-secondary vocational tracks, correct?
Correct, yes. Yeah, and, and that is something, too, that I think our goal in, in looking at this process for students is that we want to provide this opportunity for, you know, that may be a student who really isn't sure yet. You know, a lot of times, as seventeen, eighteen years old, you're really not sure, you know, for what you want to do when you, you leave Brooklyn High School. So it's really an exposure that you're going to have the skills for whatever decision you may make. You know, if that is, hey, I'm going to go to a, a trade school that will provide me an opportunity to do something that I, that I really want to do, or if it's a, I want to go to a four-year college and then go become a doctor. You know, that's, that's where, where we're looking at is, is we want to make sure that when you get to wherever that journey takes you, you can look back and say, you know, I learned that in this course, and now I'm able to access it and use it.
And some of that additional prep work for students who may choose not to go to college but do a career pathway would be things such as preparing for interview process, you know, coming to, coming to, to work on time, and those soft skills that need to be present for, for success in the workforce. So those kinds of preparatory work will happen in that, in that format as well.
So just to revisit some of these things, the course alignment and additions, and this kind of flushes out a little bit further what Brian had stated on the second slide there, which is, for the first one there, these changes are going to allow our students to earn more credits that are guaranteed to be transferable to college. This initiative is more, provide more credits for our students, but as well as more credits onsite specifically to encourage our offering, encourage our students to stay onsite and take what we're going to be offering. Gives us a clear picture to students and families for the scheduling process and what the students can expect to complete during the time at Brooklyn High School. Providing our students and our parents with a little bit more transparency of what the appropriate tracks are for the students and what we are going to do in terms of our sequencing, and making sure we believe that parents and students will benefit from that. Providing remediation for our students to greater achievement in upper-level courses. Again, this kind of gets to that point of the applied algebra. Done, and really making sure that our students are as prepared as we can possibly make them before they take standard, you know, standardized tests like the end-of-course exam. Setting the foundations for continued growth and achievement scores for our students. You know, just making sure that we're providing that opportunity so that when they do have to sit down to take either an AP exam or an end-of-course exam, that they're going to be as prepared as we can possibly make them, and then streamlining our process for course offerings to allow for predictable class sizes for future scheduling. And this is just so that we can provide the most student-centered schedule possible for our students, for the families, and so that it reflects what they actually do want to be taking versus what we can offer them.
So what we've done in this process is we've created sequences for students to provide clarity for what this will look like for you, if you are a student here at Brooklyn High School. So as you can see, in the math sequencing chart, we've offered three different sequences for students to enter. These are interchangeable, so a student may. sequences for students to enter. These are interchangeable, so a student may decide that they want to be in the honors AP track or sequence, and then they may, you know, move to a standard or a standard may move up into the honors sequence. What it really is, is we're trying to provide a vision for families so that, especially when we're looking at scheduling and that, that they have some idea of what this is going to look like throughout their high school experience. So what we've done here is we've added our applied algebra, which you'll see in the ninth grade for students that are still emerging, still developing skills that are necessary for them to be successful in Algebra I and some of the upper level courses beyond that. And then you also see in our AP slash honors track that we're providing CCP courses and then also AP courses earlier. What we want to do here is to provide students with the opportunity to really gain those credits earlier so that they have more ability to earn credits throughout their high school career.
Excellent. Thank you. So one of the things that we discussed when we were looking at that is where we can make the scheduling a little bit more efficient for our kids in terms of the course offering, and realizing that it was a little bit redundant for us to be offering both an honors English eleven as well as a CCP course when really our honors English eleven students in theory should be able to handle some of the rigor of a college credit plus course. So we're going to be replacing honors English eleven with our CCP Composition one and two. And then the same will carry forward for our twelfth-grade students. So we're adding two CCP courses. So if the eleventh grade is more about composition, then the, then the the twelfth-grade offering will be more about language. And so we're offering them Intro to Poetry and Intro to Fiction. Again, these are more offerings for our students to earn college credits moving forward, and they would replace our honors in English twelve and honors English eleven. The pathway for our students in a standard pathway would still remain the same. So they would take the appropriate grade level English course that corresponds with what's offered for their grade level.
And Mr. Larson, quick question. So students still have that ability to, especially let's say eleventh and twelfth-grade year, jump back and forth into the pathway. So eleventh-grade year, we take CCP Comp one and two, but then senior year, for whatever reason, we we decide not to, we can jump back into the English four standard pathway if we want to, correct? And vice versa.
Yeah, absolutely. As long as we just make sure that they're hitting the four credits that they need to hit at the high school level for English, absolutely. So yeah, and then thank you for bringing that back up because I know that was a lot of feedback and making sure that, and I know Mr. Here touched on it briefly with the other one, was just looking and making sure that, you know, we understand things change for our students, and maybe they were not as dedicated to start off their high school career as they would be as they finish. So making sure that we're offering them that advanced course as well, and as Mr. or Dr. Clarice was also pointing out, if they need to, for whatever reason, back off on the rigor, because maybe they're going to focus more on mathematics or science to make sure that they also had those core course offerings.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
So in science, you can see that we have added AP Biology for our eleventh-grade students. We've also moved the ninth-grade offering for our standard track to a physical science where then they would take tenth-grade Biology, Chemistry, and then they have the option of Physics or Forensics. This will offer our students with the opportunity to graduate with two AP courses that can count towards college credit. We also believe that it's going to really prepare our students as they, especially with our physical science, that they will really be prepared and have the understanding to be successful as they continue in those upper level courses. I want to emphasize too, and Mr. Larson spoke to it last time, that as we look at these sequences, our goal is not to fit any student in a specific box, but it's to give clarity. So when we looked through that and talked to different families and students is that we saw that they were choosing courses year by year without that bigger picture in front of them. So we really want to present that bigger picture to make sure that they, they know what they're and are able to set goals as they move forward through their high school careers.
Mr. Here, you may have mentioned this, and I apologize if I missed it. Can you explain to the board what, especially that eleventh and twelfth-grade year in the AP Honors track, what double, what double means for the board? So they have that out, so they understand that piece.
Yeah, absolutely. Absolutely. So that is an opportunity for a student to take two sciences during those times. So if you're someone who is looking to pursue a career that would involve science, or if science is a hobby, an interest of yours, what we want to do is provide different options and opportunities for students to really be able to be interest-driven or career-driven as they enter the next level of after high school.
Thank you.
Excellent. So if you look here, for the most part, the pacing is going to be pretty similar to what we're currently offering our kids for the most part. You'll notice that under the 10th grade, it did change. We are no longer offering an honors US History course. Again, in terms of preparing our students for the next phase, if they want to consider a college, we really want to make sure that they get exposed as much as we can for them. So we'd be replacing the honors US History with AP US History, A-Push for short. Again, early on, you know, we're going to allow our teachers and our students to kind of develop a little bit. We don't, you know, we do care about the scores, of course, but we really want to make sure that these kids are just getting an opportunity to really see what college-level type of work looks like before they hit the AP government and before they hit some of our offerings that we'd like to bring down the pipe later, which is our CCP courses and further AP courses at the twelfth-grade level. Then secondly, for the standard, it does really remain the same, making sure that our students understand that we're often going to provide as many electives as we can. You know, knowing that the students only need to hit three social studies credits in order to satisfy that criteria to graduate from the state of Ohio, but making sure that the electives are also kind of reflective of our student body and what their interests are.
And especially when we look at the AP US History, one of the reasons that we selected that course to be in the 10th grade is to really emphasize the writing that is involved to be successful in some of, in the higher-level courses. Is that we wanted to expose our students to that in the 10th grade so that they can really create the mindset of the expectation for those courses so that they can be successful as they enter those courses in other content areas as well. So we're really looking at that A-Push to be the avenue to, for exposure for those students.
Okay, Brian had mentioned a couple of slides ago about clarity and transparency for our families, and I don't think it impacted any one group more than it did the arts group, specifically looking at sequencing and making sure that in order for a student to get the most that they possibly can out of a high-level fine arts course, that they're not necessarily just in a classroom with a group of students who just signed up for the course, and that there's some kind of structure to how they're taking these. So making sure that the sequencing chart to increase the depth of each course as the students are going to build upon basic skills that would have, or learned in a prior course. So making sure that they're familiar with the basics before they move on and take a more advanced art course. You know, looking at things like screen printing being added to our offerings in Level One so that we can provide really unique opportunities for our students, but making sure that they're building on skills so that if they get to, you know, Murals One, that they really have a solid foundation of understanding what they need to do in order to make that class really worth it, so that when they, when they hit Murals Two, that they really do get a full experience.
For the eighth grade, so we've streamlined the eighth-grade selections some in order to really have them focus during that eighth-grade year on some of the important pieces so that they're prepared for high school. So all of our students will participate in automation and robotics, design and modeling. That is, we operate through Polaris with Mr. Goodwin, who does an excellent job with that. We'll have leadership and then computer applications. Obviously, we've seen this year how important it is to be able to be able to operate and use a computer effectively, and Mr. Timas does an excellent job working with our students in that. And then students will have an option for their elective. So again, we want to, we want to allow students to look at courses that they have interest in. So you can see our Spanish one, our Chinese one courses. We specifically left Spanish one and Chinese one there in order to prepare those students as they get to the higher level, especially because it's such an emphasis on speaking. When we look at our Chinese four and Spanish four, and then our AP courses, we want those students to start to get that exposure in the eighth grade. Eighth-grade band, I don't think I have to talk much about our arts program as far as the high level that it functions and the amount of students that we have engaged in producing high-level pieces. Our leadership and computer applications, we spoke to, and our design and modeling, and then we also have PE and studio art as options for students there in order to look at if they have an interest in art at a, you know, studio artist, which Mr. Larson spoke to in our, the last slide, and producing high level of pieces. I think we really are excited to see, and we've seen a lot of those high-level pieces around the building in our murals, and we're excited for the opportunity that we've been presented and worked with Sherwin-Williams for the upcoming mural in Brooklyn.
Mr. Here, Spanish one, Chinese one is for high school credit?
Yes, sir. Yep.
Then Algebra I is still offered to our eighth graders for, for high school credit to, for a select group?
Correct. So we still have our core courses, Dr. Clarice, we have our English, honors English, Algebra I, pre-algebra, social studies, honor social studies, and then science and honor science.
And just as an aside on the language courses in eighth grade, Spanish and Chinese both, those also will be based on the student's performance in English. Because if they're struggling in their, in their current, you know, language, they're going to have a hard time in a foreign language. So any student that chooses to take Spanish or Chinese will be based on an evaluation of their English grade as well.
Thanks, Michelle.
So subjects that, that have not changed. So we've made a lot of changes, but I think it's also important to discuss some of the areas that we've kept the same. Just when we looked at this whole process, there's obviously things we're going to continue to tweak, and this is a document that we're going to continue to work in in the upcoming years. But World Languages, we spoke to them in the last slide, that students will still have that opportunity to be successful, and our numbers of achievement have been very successful with our AP exams with our Mrs. Holko and Mrs. Wang, who have helped create high-level students for our AP courses. Health and Physical Education, students will receive, start receiving credit in the ninth grade. We do have the waiver for students that participate in athletic activities, other activities. Pre-engineering, we're still Project Lead the Way School. We're very excited and happy to partner with Polaris and now with Dr. Hughes and Mr. Goodwin, who both do an excellent job with teaching courses that expose our students to different engineering avenues. And then our business and computer technology, we're going to continue to participate in the TEALS program, which Mr. Timas leads, and continue to focus on building computer skills throughout our programs.
Excellent. I'm not going to read this entire slide. I think that'd be cumbersome, but at the same time, just a reminder that we know what the students need right now in order to graduate from high school, but the next couple graduating classes are going to be underneath two umbrellas. One is the existing one with the end-of-course exam scores that they need to hit, the credits that they need to hit. But they can also utilize the graduating class of 2023 and beyond graduation requirements as well. So the basics, as we talk about them, are going to be just making sure that they get all the credits that we require for them to graduate from Brooklyn High School. Competency, so I mentioned before about preparing our students for the Algebra I exam. They need to get at least proficient on the Algebra I or the English, and the English II end-of-course exam. There are a couple of other pathways that are listed there, but those are the two primary ones. And then readiness. So we have twelve seals that our students can earn. Three of those seals are locally designed. Students can only earn one of those seals. They must earn at least one Ohio Design Seal. They can certainly earn more than two seals. Some of our students will definitely qualify for. But I wanted to visit some of the locally designed seals that we did. But prior to that, I wanted to thank a few people. Our Practical and our Fine Arts Team, this is K through 12, were amazingly important on developing these seals moving forward. We had help from Amy Harkness over at the ESC, but also wanted to thank Ms. Kalish to allow us the time and opportunity during professional development days to really kind of put and flesh these seals out, and then the feedback that we received from Ms. Valenza and Dr. Clarice throughout this process. I just wanted to thank everybody for that. Moving forward, we're going to look at the first seal, and that's the Community Service Seal. So we already have a community service requirement for our students, and this kind of builds on that. They got to complete a community service project that aligns with the guidelines adopted by the student's local Board of Education or school governing authority. So what we tried to do was create a community service seal that reflected some of the districts around us. So that was the nice part about working with the ESC is that we were able to better get an idea of what schools around us were going to be providing for their kids so that we can mimic that just in case there was a student transferring in, that they didn't have to start from square one with us. We're looking, and this is what we would prefer, forty hours total, preferably ten hours per year at a single location. And this would kind of force that fidelity piece and consistency piece on our students' part. We would modify the hours for our transfer students, down to thirty hours if need be, especially if they transferred in as a current junior. These should be conducted with a registered 501(c)(3) that are listed at several websites. We have one of which being IRS.gov. And then for every single one of these seals, we thought that there needed to be a written reflection component, which would be evaluated by a team of teachers, administrators, and counselors to just check off and make sure. But this is absolutely a requirement and something that we don't feel we could really budge on. We wanted to make sure there was still an academic component to these seals. So that's the Community Service Seal. This, the fine and performing arts seal, they need to demonstrate a skill or fine or performing arts according to the evaluation aligned with guidelines adopted by the school's student local board and school governing authority. What we were thinking, or what we suggested was that it be six credit hours of a fine and performing arts courses, and realizing that some of these courses are only half-credits, so they would have to make sure that it is six full-credit hours. Or if they couldn't earn that, it would be four-credit hours of fine and performing arts courses and the completion of two arts activities. So it could be participating in solo and ensemble, participating in the Spring Musical, participating in some type of, you know, outside activity that has to do with the arts. Obviously, it would have to be approved by the counselor and administration. Then again, getting back to the written reflection piece and really making sure that they understand the importance of arts and education. Moving on to the last one. And this is a student engagement seal. Again, they want to make sure that our students are participating in extracurricular activities such as athletics, clubs, and government, or to any meaningful extent. Want to make sure that our students are branching out a little bit. If we only said four extracurricular activities, that meant that they could participate in only one thing and still kind of graduate, which is not really what we want to do necessarily for our students. We would like for them to receive a little bit more opportunities to experience more. So while we certainly appreciate the longevity of a person who wants to play football for years, we would like for them to try a couple of other things. So we're looking at six extracurricular activities with a preference being at least three years in one activity, or at least two years in two activities. Again, really as a team, we looked at it, and we wanted to make sure that our students were not just dipping their toe in a bunch of water, but rather, you know, which is fine, but certainly we wanted to have some kind of consistency. That's something that accepting universities will really be looking at to make sure that our students are consistent with their experiences and that they can just be there time and time again. Verification from the advisor or coach, we do have a set of guidelines that we've asked the advisors and coaches to consider before they approve these items. And again, back to the written reflection piece, which we really do feel is very important.
If I could just add one thing to that, I'm sorry. I think the important, the important note with the seals, the student engagement, the arts, and the community service piece, these are, these are available for students who are, who are struggling to meet some of those testing requirements, right? So when Ohio, when Ohio Department of Education revamped the, the graduation requirements, they, they, they wanted to take less of a focus on those, those end-of-the-course exams that, that have really been the focus the last four or five years. So these seals provide opportunities for students who traditionally struggle with some of those exam take, those exams, to provide themselves an opportunity to, to, to earn those seals. You know, if I had to guess a number, you're probably looking, maybe five to 10% of our graduating classes will be using these seals in one form or another to kind of fulfill that graduation requirement. So it's really a benefit for kids to give lots of different kids options to graduate. So I just want to add that, Mr. Larson, didn't mean to.
Yeah, absolutely. And that was something I was thinking about before, too, is just making sure that we understand that our students aren't just going to be kids that can do too well on a test, right? We know that the high school experience is so much more than that, and it's nice to see that the OD is actually giving us some local leeway to determine what that looks like for us, and allowing these local opportunities to hit the population that Dr. Clarice was just talking about, which are those students who may not necessarily test well, but they're still really important to the overhaul of school experience and that they took advantage of their high school career.
I just want to say thank you to. I just want to say thank you to Ryan, Matt, and Michelle for, for being here. And I want to give the, the board an opportunity to ask any specific questions. My mother told me once, silence is acceptance.
I do like the trade school. I know Polaris does the, you know, when they're graduating, you know, they go through the same kind of rigor as far as resume writing and interviewing and all of that. So I'm glad to see that there's some dovetailing with what Polaris is doing.
Yeah.
That work came out of, when I first arrived in the district, we were using Avid. And I, I know you've heard us talk about Avid curriculum, which I think is, is a great springboard to what we're, what we're proposing moving forward. Avid is, is good teaching, but it's also good preparation for students who choose to, to go to college after, after high school and providing them opportunities to learn organization, organizational skills and resume writing and interviewing and visiting a school, you know, college campuses and that. And Mr. Hair and Mr. Larson and I spoke and, and Dr. Kalaris. And, you know, my, my feeling on it is that's, that's great, but I want that for all of our kids. I don't want it just for a handful of students. And Avid is very narrow in that it only allows for a certain number of students. And so we started discussing ways that we could offer those kinds of opportunities to all of our students. And so that's this work that you're seeing in front of you tonight, that's starting to unveil that kind of approach and how we incorporate all of our kids in that opportunity. Some of our kids aren't going to realize they want to go to college until after they graduate Brooklyn and move on and find that it's really hard in the world. And, and they want to go back and, and try again. So want to give them at least those building blocks.
I think one of the things that we've talked about with, with the board and really what we've talked about as an admin and teaching staff is, is that, you know, we want Brooklyn to be considered an elite school, an elite school district, right? And, and when I, when I use the word elite, I, it's almost synonymous with different options for different kids. And I think the, the, the work that we've started this year despite COVID, right? We don't, COVID is going to be gone hopefully soon, but we want to keep moving forward. And I think this program of study begins us down the path of, of that elite mind frame that we're going to continue, continue moving forward with our academics and giving all of our kids different options to excel because ultimately we want them to, to be successful adults and to really have that plan when they walk out our doors. So.
And I want to, I want to thank Mr. Hair and Mr. Larson. I mean, this was a, this was a huge task this year. With everything else going on, you know, it was, you know, resurrecting old documents and trying to figure out what was most recent and, and then go through piece by piece and, and take out what's not relevant anymore and add what is. And, and you know, it's certainly a, a document that is a living document. It'll be revised every year and updated. And I'm sure we'll find things in it that we don't, don't necessarily agree with, really go, we need to fix that. But, but there was a lot of work that went into this, and I think a lot of thoughtful planning and, and articulation. So I appreciate their work on this.
Okay. Oh, Mr. Hair, sorry. Go ahead.
But I, I, I just want to thank the, the board and, and the community, really. I know that there are some community members who are watching tonight for their support of the school and, and the high school this year. It's, it's been overwhelming at times to, to see how positive and, and helpful people have been in supporting us here at the high school and, and our teaching staff. And it's really greatly appreciated. So a little bit off subject, but, but we really do appreciate all the support of our families and our, our kids in our community. And, and that it's, it's one of the unique opportunities where Dr. Kalaris talked about us being elite. Is it where we, we've had the opportunity to see that elite community and that what elite community support looks like. So thank you again for your time this evening.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Mrs. Barcheck, I have a few comments if that's okay?
Yes, yes.
Great. Matt, Ryan, and Michelle.
Did you have a question?
Oh, okay, okay.
You guys can hang out or you can leave.
I'm going to gracefully bow out. I've got a wife that really needs some help at home with our three boys under five, so.
Have a good night, guys. Thanks.
Thank you guys so much again. Really appreciate it.
Again, we appreciate it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mrs. Barcheck, thanks. I'm going to, I guess, got a few comments. Just want to kind of, as we, we approach the, the end of the calendar year. So obviously, we've been in remote learning for the past, this is, this is week three. And, and obviously, it is, it's not an ideal situation for us. But again, I want to thank our families for patience and for their resilience in, in working through the remote, thanking our teaching staff and our administrators for what they, what they do daily. Hopefully, I, I'd like to announce that I, I want our students to return on January 4th in the hybrid schedule. I'm gonna, I'm gonna, hopefully, I'm gonna be reserved in that and say that I'm going to announce to our families, I'd like to return on January 4th, but, but as precaution, we should be prepared to, to stay in remote for, for parts of January because I just don't know what the future will hold with the Caga County Board of Health or our state advisory system. I think as we, as we, we get through the school year and, and obviously, we've committed to that, that advisory system. I think we need to, as we go into next school year, we need to, to kind of take a hard look at, 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 at what's happening in Brooklyn compared to what's happening outside the state or outside of the, the county as a whole. We've obviously committed this year to, to the, the advisory system. And I think that's the right thing to do. But I think as the, the further along we get in this, this pandemic, I think I would have probably made some different recommendations to the board or even had different conversations. And that's not a, that's not a criticism of, of anything that we've done. We just, we're all going through a pandemic for the first time, unfortunately. But I, but I, again, I, I appreciate all the work that everybody has done. And like I said, if, if my goal is to get us back on January 4th with reservation that, that potentially we could have our remote learning extended for, for a little bit of time. Also to our families, I know we have some families who have selected all remote options for the first semester. Right now, we have about 250 or 260 of those families who have committed for second semester remote. And I would encourage families that are listening this evening, if you are still interested in having that all remote option for your student for second semester, either fill out that survey, reach out to one of your children's teachers, or reach out to a building principal. Because I think we want to make sure that we have the, a correct data as we start to make staffing decisions, because I think staffing will, may look a little bit differently. We want to make sure we have the right resources in the right spot for, for our kids. Started this evening with a strategic planning committee. I, I made this announcement and gave the board information in our weekly updates. We're going to, to start a, a, called a Portrait of a Graduate. And, and it's kind of a backwards design piece where, where the committee will develop the, the qualities, the skills, the characteristics, and the competencies that we want our Brooklyn graduates to walk out the door with. So for example, problem solving. The purpose of this, I think, is, is a, a kind of a pre-K through 12 movement because we, we know that when a student crosses the stage in grade 12, there's been a lot of love and effort and work from families, from students, from, from parents, from teachers, from administrators, all along that student's career. So we want to be able to provide a vision to both the board, to our, to our parents, and to our students, is this is what we want you to look like. And we, these are the skills we want you to have as you walk out our door. So I'm very excited about the work. Mr. Slattery is going to, obviously, when he's feeling, he's feeling a little bit better, be part of that committee, both kind of representing the Board of Education, but also representing a, a graduate of Brooklyn High School, because I think that perspective is important. We have parents on the committee. We have administrators, we have teachers of all levels, and we, you know, and classified staff. So hope to have more information to the board later in the spring regarding that work. Couple of congratulations to our National Junior Honor Society at our middle school level. Advisor, Mrs. Frey kind of sent me some information regarding our seventh grade inductees, and I told her that I would mention them this evening. Please excuse any mispronunciations of the names. I try, I'm trying. So we have Warren Atanasio, Malik Chafki, Jonathan Changary, Jacob Groves, Jana Jadala, Natalie Kebbell, and Luca Zuvik. And so I want to reach out and, and say congratulations to those newest members of the, the National Honor Society. I'm hoping we can have some type of in-person ceremony later in the spring as, as hopefully, we, we were coming to an end to some of the, the pandemic issues. Congratulations to Kevin May. He's our 2020 National College Match finalist. And this is a program where Kevin's going to be eligible to receiving a, a, a full four-year scholarship to, scholarship to a university. So Kevin is a finalist and congratulations to him. Good luck to our winter sports athletes, as the data and health data in Caga County is improving a little bit. Our students are going to, our winter athletes are going to be, start practicing. And, and I, I will emphasize practicing because as a, as the CVC, Shugren Valley Conference, the conference committed to no athletic competition until after the new year. So I think this is a good test for, number one, get our kids back active again, get them prepared to playing in January. But it's also a good, good test to make sure our kids are, are be able to play safely with each other. So they'll be starting that up over break in a limited capacity. Congratulations. And then we're going to mention that in a little bit here with one of the resolutions, but congrats to our CVC Fall Athlete Winners, our All District Athletes, and our All Ohio Athletes. Congratulations for all their hard work and especially in, in a crazy time and a crazy year. And then happy holidays really to, to our hurricane families, our staff members, our, our teachers, our administrators, our parents, our board. It's been an amazing first part of the year. And last but not least, happy birthday, Mr. Neil. You look great for 35, sir. Those are my comments. Mrs. Barcheck.
Thank you, Dr. Kalaris. Now on to board reports and board committee, board comments and board committee reports. We're going to start off with Mr. Rocky Neal.
Thank you. Appreciate the birthday wishes as well from all of you. All right. 35 is, you know, not a bad number, but nowhere near that one. I would just thank Mr. Hair, Mr. Larson, and Ms. Kalish for their presentation. It was a wonderful presentation. There's a lot of good things coming out of Brooklyn City Schools. We can see that already, a lot of changes. COVID has changed everyone's life, and it's changed education forever, I think. So appreciate that support and what you guys have done. It's a lot of work. So good job. And I just want to say Merry Christmas to the Brooklyn City School families and keep up the good work. Stay safe and stay healthy. And that's all I have for my report today, Mrs. Barcheck.
Thank you, Mr. Neil. Now on to Mr. Rick Singer.
Yes, daddos on that with Rocky just mentioned. I think this new plan of action for the curriculum should work out really nice. I think it, it kind of meets that, that target of excellence in education. You know, hopefully, it transitions well with whatever the state ODE tells us we, we will be tested on. And the only concern I have with the presentation, I'm sorry, I was muted. I lost this to signal once in a while. Just to talk about this a little further tomorrow morning with Colleen, just on the impact of any kind of changes in staffing. You know, are, is our staff ready to handle this presentation, which I think was excellent. I think Mr. Hair, Mrs. Kalish, and Matt Larson are to be commended for, for their work on this.
Mr. Singer, if I, right now, I believe we're going to be able to, to pull this off in terms of without additional staffing. I mean, I think there'll be a little bit of an added cost from the college credit plus perspective. But I think that that's going to be a minor, a minor expense that would not have a dramatic impact on the budget. But from a, a staffing standpoint, I believe Mr. Hair has worked out credentialing and all of the, the sections in terms of what he thinks will happen. Michelle, Ms. Kalish, I don't know if you can talk about that, but I, I don't, I don't think we're in a position where we're going to be adding a lot of additional cost.
You're correct. We, we have looked at how we sequence the courses with our current staffing and the ability to be able to offer those courses without additional staff. And we, we are confident that that is going to be the case. And with the college credit plus, right, we don't know what that will look like, but we do know that we believe many of our students go off campus because they don't have opportunities on campus. And by providing those opportunities on campus, students are able to get, they get two benefits from that. One, they get to maintain relationships with their peers and be part of their high school, their high school experience. But also, they can earn college credit towards, you know, towards college in the future without traveling. And a lot of our students have challenges where they aren't able to travel for those college, college credit plus courses. So I think we're, we're providing two opportunities. And by offering many of these courses in-house, it's actually cheaper than it is if kids travel off campus and go to Cleveland State or Tri-C or any of the other options out there. So even though there is a cost to offering CCP in-house, it is much less than kids going off campus. And so if we can tackle that, I think actually our costs will average out.
Good. Thank you for that. Just want to continue the report. I want to thank Mrs. A for her presentation for the CRA. Be nice to have another income stream, revenue stream coming in to Brooklyn City Schools. And Rob Slattery, get better. And happy birthday, Rocky. And I want to wish all of you a Merry, Merry Christmas and, and Happy New Year if I don't see you. Mrs. A, I'll, I'll see you tomorrow morning for the Finance Committee meeting and report.
Thank you, Mr. Singer. Now on to Mr. Jim Ober.
Thank you. Just a quick question to Ms. Kalish about the presentation. I don't know if I'm maybe getting into the weeds too much, but is, will there be a lot of, do you envision a lot of revamping of what actually is taught, I guess? I don't know if I'm putting this correctly, as far as the curriculum is concerned, I mean, curriculum titles, but as far as what is actually being taught, will there have to be a lot of revamping to what is given? Am I making sense?
Yeah, I, I think the only revamping that we will be looking at is the Applied Algebra course. That is a, that is a different course structure. And so I'll be working with Mr. Hair, Mr. Larson, and one of the math teachers or, or two math teachers, if they choose to develop that, that curriculum. What is that going to look like? How are we dividing that course? And which standards will be taught? But in terms of being able to deliver the content, it's going to be familiar to those teachers because they're doing it currently with Algebra One. So it's just taking Algebra One and kind of dividing it. And the, the leadership courses or the, the Prepare for Success courses that, that were discussed, we already have that in motion with, with our teachers, both at the middle level and at the high school level. So we started that work last year with, with Mr. Wengler. So I don't, I don't see it being much of a challenge for us to, to continue that, that track. The only other addition would be the addition of the AP courses. And if you recall, last year, we added AP Stats. The previous year, we added AP Government. And so that is a matter of, of sending teachers for the AP training. And they follow very rigorous course description and course guide.
Those are national curriculums, Mr. Ober. So there, it's, we're almost voluntold to teach those courses because the, the college board is trying to equate it, equate that curriculum across all the, the whole United States, really the world. So the, the, in the, in the CCP courses, those are all college-based courses. So our teachers teaching that curriculum, that course will be given that curriculum.
Okay. Yeah, I didn't think I was reinventing the wheel, but I just wondered if it was just a little bit of a paradigm shift or something like that.
It is definitely a paradigm shift in some aspects, depending on which courses we're talking about. By adding AP US History, I mean, that's definitely upping the rigor in our history elective and, or in our history track. But I'm, I'm confident, given the success we've had with our other courses, that our teachers will rise to that occasion. They'll go through rigorous training. AP offers a lot of support. They'll go through rigorous training. AP offers a lot of support for its teachers in the AP community. So teachers who, who travel down that pathway have a lot of supports. And we've worked also in First Ring and talking about providing some opportunities for AP teachers to get together and, and discuss, you know, the things that are going well and things they're having challenges with. So I do think while there will be a little bit of learning that will have to happen, I think that's good for our teachers and it's good for everybody to continue that process. So nothing that I don't think is, is attainable or that is out of the realm of possibility for us.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Polaris, a couple of things real quick. There are invitations sent out to sophomores about the prospect of going to Polaris. There is a virtual, it's called Virtual Sophomore Visitations. Due to the pandemic, they can't visit the campus as it stands now. But there is a virtual link that will link to what course they could be interested in. And they click on the link and it'll run a short video of the instructor and what happens in the class and what goes on. Also, this is brought on by a media company that's actually located down the street on Bagley Road called Perception Media. That is, this is also dovetailing with what a virtual tour of Polaris would be like. So they came out and shot pretty much everything 360 degrees, went into each of the classrooms. And it's kind of, it's really neat. It's going to be rolled out probably after the first of the year. If you look, let's say you look at the culinary, you look at the kitchen and there's a little picture at the end of the hall or at the end of the room, I should say. You click on that and then it activates a video where Chef Foe would exactly tell about the, the, the class and what it entails and what, what the expectations are. There's another little icon, like a wall picture that you click on and then a student will start talking and explain, you know, what he saw when he took the class. And there's another one that will show in detail as far as what the, in printed detail of what the expectations are for the class. And it's a really neat thing. We just got a little sample of it and it's going to be rolled out. It'll be available on the website probably in January. It's, it's really next, next level kind of stuff. It's really interesting. And as soon as it comes out, I'll let, make sure to let everybody know about it. Other than that, that's pretty much all I have, other than happy holidays to everybody and happy birthday, Rocky Neal.
Thank you, Mr. Ober. I'd like to thank everyone for the presentation tonight. Thank you so much. They were very informative. We really appreciate it. I would also like to wish everyone a Merry Christmas and a Happy New Year. Twenty twenty has been quite the rough year for everybody, I think. And so I think I can say with certainty that a lot of people will be very relieved when it's 2021. So have a very healthy, stay healthy and safe holiday. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. If anyone would like to speak to me, I can always be reached at 216-406-4304. And happy birthday, Rocky, and you are tonight's reader.
My birthday present is to read. Ready? Resolved at the minutes of the November 17th, 2020 Board of Education meeting be adopted and all action taken by the Board of Education at said meeting is hereby reaffirmed and approved.
Make it a motion, please. Can I get a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the financial statements of receipts and expenditures for the month of November 2020, including all fund disorders paid and all then and now statements for the month of November as submitted.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved by Rick Singer.
Second. Can I get a second, please?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby commends the following students per the attachment for Fall Athletic Academic Hour Honors.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second by Rick Singer.
Questions, comments?
Congratulations.
Good job, gang.
Good job. Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the second reading and adoption of the following board policies. PO 6114, Cost Principles. PO 6144, Investments. PO 6152, Student Fees, Fines and Charges. PO 6152.01, Waiver of School Fees for Instructional Materials. PO 6325, Procurement, Federal Grants and Funds.
Can I get a motion, please? Second, please.
Second.
Questions, comments?
This Barcheck, this is the, the second reading and this will get us up to date on our policies that were kind of left over from last spring. That being said, we'll probably getting our new batch of policy updates in the next month or so. We will have one policy to review on the, on the January 6th organization meeting, but I'll update the board in my Friday update on that one, okay?
Thank you. Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves a Brooklyn High School Program of Study for the 2021, 2022 school year.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Second. Questions, comments?
Again, this is Barcheck Board. Just a thank you to everybody involved in the process. We kind of challenged the high school staff to, the high school administration to kind of push the limit. And just again, this starts with supportive of the board. And, and this is, I think, our first step to some really good things going out to high school. So just again, I thank you to everybody and thank you to the board for the support of this.
Thank you. Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
I would like to say thank you again. Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Great job. Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes. Wonderful job. Thank you.
Resolved that the Brooklyn Board of Education hereby authorize the superintendent to engage in the school, school law hotline services with the law firm of McGowan Markling Attorneys at Law. This agreement allows for a limited number of free hours of legal service and all others at a reduced rate.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Just like the motion says, it just, it gives us some additional time with Mr. Markling if needed at a reduced rate. And we'll officially adopt Mr. Markling and his firm, McGowan Markling, as one of our attorneys at the January 6th organizational meeting.
Do we have a budget for this? I mean, do we have, what is, what is the amount that we, we would plan on spending or have spent in the past?
I have not reviewed this yet with Mr. Markling, so I will get back to you on that. We had conversations about it, but I will get back to the budget.
Okay, because it's kind of inconclusive. It says free hours, but then there's a reduced rate, so just.
Yeah, what that, yeah, what that does, Mr. Singer, is it gives us five free hours, but it also allows us, so when we adopt, when we, we resolve him as one of our attorneys in January, we'll get that, we'll get the reduced rate as opposed to somebody that just cold calls him out of the blue. So because we're, we're going to be one of his partner schools, we get that premium rate with him.
Great. Good. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the attached agreement with CMSD for excess cost of children with disabilities pursuant to Section 3313.981, ORC 3323.14, ORC and the Rule 3301-4802F for educational purposes for the 2019, 2020 school year per attachment.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
And this is Barcheck Borvetsky. This agreement is, is pretty typical. We, we do have some students that live in Brooklyn City proper that, that open and roll to Cleveland. And this would be just in case, you know, something happens where they're a student with disabilities and we're under the legal requirement to fulfill some of those needs. So if we had a transport or if we had to do some of those things, that's where we would get into some of that excess cost. It's generally negligible during the year. And I, I'll talk to Mrs. Jones. I really don't believe we had anybody that, that financially impacted us last year with this.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the motion to recognize indoor track and field as a sport for the 2020, 2020 and 2021 school year for the purpose of allowing a student athlete to practice and participate with another school district during the winter 2020, 2021 athletic season.
Can I get a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Questions, comments?
Ms. Barcheck, this is a formality. We have a student athlete who's pretty competitive in track and field and has an opportunity to, to participate in the indoor capacity. Now, I don't even know if we're going to have that capability this year with COVID. What this does is this allows that student to compete as a Brooklyn athlete, which then also allows this athlete, student athlete, if we get to that point too, there's a, there's an end of the season indoor state competition. And this will allow that student to compete as a Brooklyn athlete. There's no cost to us. There may be negligible transportation costs. But we have a partner agreement with another school district who has a functioning indoor track. And that's kind of the challenge. It's hard to find a school district close to us that has indoor track. And so really this just provides another opportunity for that student to compete as a Brooklyn athlete during that winter season. But then again, but the caveat, I don't even know if we're going to have that season because right now all of these indoor meets occur at colleges. And right now, according to the other school district, nobody's, nobody's committing to a winter season. So right now, this is a formality just in hopes that the, the, the young lady can compete.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby accepts the, accepts with regret the certified retirement of Gary Plazinski effective February 22nd, 2021.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved by Rick Singer.
I'll second it.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
The Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby commends Gary Plazinski for his 23 years of service to the students of Brooklyn.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
I'll second it.
Questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Plazinski.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Michael Plazinski, for all your direction.
Just a, just a quick little note. I had a conversation with Gary and he struggled mightily with this decision, but ultimately came to what's best for him and his family and to support him in that. He's going to be missed. He did a nice job. He did a great job with our kids. Known him a long time, so his presence will be missed, but, but congratulations and good luck in, in his future endeavors.
Absolutely. I agree.
A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves parental leave of absence for Julie McCary effective March 16th, 2021 through remainder of 2020, 21 school year.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
I'll second it.
Okay. Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves a verbal, verbal supplemental coaching resignation for Louis Rugginski, varsity wrestling coach, half effective immediately.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second? Questions, comments?
Just like it said, Mr. Rugginski just couldn't fulfill the coaching responsibilities. Talk with Mr. Verba resigned and then the, the following resolution on 5.5 will be to, to fill that half position from a 0.5 to a 1, a 1.0 FTE. So that's the, the adjustment in the resolution.
Thank you. Mrs. A, can you call the roll?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby amends Resolution 20-10-359 to reflect the FTE change for Mike Keo from varsity assistant wrestling coach halftime to varsity assistant full-time.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I get a second, please? Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Resolved that the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education hereby approves the attached Community Reinvestment Area Compensation Agreement on file in the Treasurer's Office.
Can I have a motion, please?
Moved.
Can I have a second? Questions, comments?
Great idea.
Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
Board business. Nomination for the President Pro Tem. Resolve that link. Let's see. Mrs. Barcheck take over as board business.
Yes. Do you have any nominations for President Pro Tem for our organizational meeting?
Yeah, nominated Bonnie Barcheck.
Yep, I do too.
Daddo.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. Thank you. Okay. Resolve that Bonnie Barcheck. Anyone else? Any other nominations for, okay? This is, I know you find this hilarious, Dr. Kalaris.
You can nominate yourself.
I'm reading this about myself.
I do.
We resolved that Bonnie Barcheck will be elected the President Pro Tem for the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education at the 2020, 21 organizational meeting. Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Okay, so we closed it out and now we're on to 7.2. So, Mrs. A. Yep. Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes, I'm, you know, abstaining, yes, for myself. Yes. Okay. Of course, do we have any correspondence related to any action information?
Did you do 7.2 or, or, oh, we did some. Okay, I'm good.
Yeah.
We've loaded on 7.2.
Do you have any correspondence or any action information?
Oh, wait a minute. Hold on, Bonnie. We, we closed nominations. That's 7.1. We need to vote on you.
We got to vote on them too, the closing, right, Rick?
Rocky, you need to read that.
All right. Well, resolve that Bonnie Barcheck be elected as President Pro Tem on the Brooklyn City School District Board of Education for 2021 organizational meeting.
Can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Mrs. A, can you call the roll?
Now we can. There we go. Good job, Rick.
Mr. Singer.
Yes.
Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes.
All right.
Do we have any other business?
I have one little thing. Yesterday I got a very lengthy text from our friend Harry McCormick. I neglected him and it's really, there's a lot to it. I don't want to go into it now, but it's, it concerns a topic we discussed before as. I don't want to go into it now, but it's, it concerns a topic we discussed before as far as having a ceremony at the field and gets into a couple of other things. But I'll share, I'll share that with the board at a later time. Nothing urgent or anything like that, just I'll share it. It's a lot to digest, I'll put it that way.
Thank you, Mr. Ober. Anyone else? Announcement of our twenty twenty-one organizational meeting of the Brooklyn Board of Education will be Wednesday, January sixth, twenty twenty-one, in the Media Center located in Brooklyn Intermediate Elementary School, ninety-two hundred Bit Off Road, Brooklyn, Ohio, at six P M. And then I have the announcement of our twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two tax budget hearing, which is, there is not, is Wednesday, January sixth, twenty twenty-one, in the Media Center located in Brooklyn Intermediate Elementary School, ninety-two hundred Bit Off Road, Brooklyn, Ohio. Is that also at six P M? Since there is, there is not a time, is there?
Yes, that is correct. Once we'll start the meeting during my recommendation, or I'm sorry, during my treasurer's report, I'll go over the tax budget and then that would be the hearing if anybody wants to come or participate. And then during the recommendations and the board will vote on it.
Thank you. Okay. Can I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Mrs. A, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Singer.
I I lost.
Just say yes.
I lost, I lost the audio.
Say yes.
Say a motion for adjournment.
There you go.
Okay, Mr. Neal.
Yes.
Mr. Ober.
Yes.
Mrs. Barcheck.
Yes, thank you.